Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our virtual town hall. I'm hoping everybody can see the screen this morning for our agenda. It is right after 11 o'clock, and we're going to get started in just a couple of minutes. Let a few more people join and get set up with their systems. I want to thank everybody for attending this morning. We have over 350 people that registered, so it's great to see that kind of engagement. Just a couple of housekeeping items for you. The agenda is on the screen, as you can see. We will once again record the virtual town hall and share it college-wide. It will take us a couple of days to get that recording captioned and uploaded, so we should have that to you early next week. We are scheduled for 60 minutes. We will do our best to stick to that timeframe or even a few minutes shorter, but we do have a lot of information to go over today, and we want to make sure we cover all of that and then also answer all of the questions that we received. If there is a question that is not answered during either the presentations or the facilitated question and answer, we will make sure that we either get an answer to you directly or find the person at the college who can answer that question for you. And so now it is just about 11:02, and being cognizant of time, I am going to turn it over to our president, President Meghan Hughes.
Thank you so much, Amy, and welcome, everyone. Great to be with you all this morning virtually. I would like to begin by just sharing a very top-line COVID update with you all and what the implications are in the near term and midterm for the college. As you likely know, yesterday, the state reported over 1,200 new COVID cases, and that is the highest number of cases we have seen in the state since the beginning of the pandemic. With that, we are seeing hospitalizations and the death toll tragically continue to rise. And what does that mean for us? We know that later this afternoon, the governor is going to be delivering her weekly briefing. Our expectation at that briefing is that she is going to announce that she and her team are encouraging high schools to consider moving to remote learning through the end of December, though encouraging K through A, at least for the time being, to remain open. So we'll be obviously tracking that briefing and sharing with you all in our CC weekly what the outcomes are. In the last 48 hours, Dr. Alexander Scott has been working with all college leadership across the state about what we together need to do as we head into Thanksgiving and the holidays at the end of the year with this dramatic rise in cases. Obviously, as a commuting college and as a college that remains almost entirely remote, we are in a fundamentally different position from our colleagues in Rhode Island who are residential and who have a much more significant student and faculty and staff presence. Nonetheless, the governor of Rhode Island, along with the other Northeast state governors, came together yesterday and issued a statement advising that all residential colleges should provide testing for students before they leave for Thanksgiving, that positive students should be quarantined on campus over the holiday, and are encouraging that all colleges utilize increased remote instruction through the end of the fall term. So obviously, our position will remain constant. Our intention always was to continue to deliver this fall's instruction remotely, which I think leads to my final three points. Look, we needed to make a decision earlier this fall about how we would deliver our winter and spring terms in order to support our faculty and staff and students in preparing for those terms. As you all know, we made the decision to continue to deliver in a remote fashion. Given what we're seeing right now in Rhode Island, that is clearly the right action to have taken. The other thing I would want to share with everyone on this call, I really enjoyed being back in my Warwick office for the fall. It was lonely without our students there and most of you. However, I have changed my work office back to home just this week in response to the statewide directive coming out of the Department of Health that all of us who can work from home should do so. So I would encourage all of you who are coming to campus to consult with your managers in order to understand what the right decision is for you. I'll just close my comments on COVID with what we're seeing at the college. Since the beginning of the fall semester, we've had 52 positive cases. The majority of those are our health science students who are in the field. Again, that is a relatively low number, given our overall enrollment rate and number of employees. You know, the last observation I would make is we have had globally some really encouraging news in the last 10 days or so with the really encouraging early results with two different vaccines. Most of you likely know that Rhode Island was chosen as one of the five pilot states for a distribution pilot with Pfizer. We're seeing already discussion that the goal is to begin rolling out that pilot even before the end of this year. I certainly hope that means that this time next year, we will be back working in the way we all want to be working, which is at our four campuses. So with that, I'm going to make a couple of observations about where the college continues to sit financially. Vice President Albritton will walk you through a more thorough summary of where we sit. I would simply say we remain in the same uncertain status that we have been really since the summer. The one input about which we now have certainty is, of course, our fall enrollment. Vice President Enright will walk you through what that looks like. We've remained in a holding pattern about a second federal stimulus bill. I think we all hope we'll learn more about that either shortly before the end of this year or as soon as the new presidential administration steps in at the end of January. What we do know is that in order to submit our budget, we are directed by the state budget office. And as we have been sharing with you all for the past several months, that directive remains unchanged, which is we have been directed to submit a budget that reflects a 15% reduction in our state appropriation dollars. So I will leave it to Vice President Albritton to walk you through that. What it means for this college is we remain in the same very sobering position that we've been in for months. As we all know, that means that many of our colleagues have had to undergo layoffs. And as we arrive at more certainty with FY '22 and have a more full understanding of what that looks like, we certainly will be looking at what we are able to do to bring that workforce back to the college. I want to close with just two student stories that have been part of my life this fall. I meet with a group of students regularly, and I'm going to highlight just two of them who I think in some ways represent the continuum of learners that we serve. One is a returning student from the spring, has a 4.0 average, a strong transfer plan to URI, and a really strong support system in place to ensure what I am confident will be a very successful experience at CCRI. The other is a first-generation, first-term, promised student who is facing all the challenges so many of you know that our students are facing, being a brand-new college student and trying to do it in this remote fashion. And I share both of those stories because they have two basic things in common that make me optimistic for their mutual success. The first is they both share an enormous desire to succeed at this college and to get a college degree and to build their lives. The second thing they share from many stories they have both shared with me is they have both enjoyed just superlative support from this college community. So I have a dozen individual stories from each one of them about how individual faculty members have stepped up to help them figure out navigating this fall and individual advisors and financial aid and so many other people at the college. So I wish you all could see them on this video with me. I just want to tell you that when I meet with them, which I do just about every single week, I leave those calls feeling enormously inspired and energized by them, by our students, and also by what all of you are doing every single day. And so even though I don't get to see you every day, I want you to know that I have a very current and robust understanding of what you all are bringing to the work. In this Thanksgiving season, I do want to say thank you, my deepest thanks to every single one of you. I'm confident that none of us, as a collective, have faced a more challenging time than the one we're facing together right now. And I think it says everything about this college community, those of you who are working on behalf of our students every single day and our students themselves, that in the middle of the worst pandemic this country has experienced in a century, what did the Community College of Rhode Island do? We produced the highest number of graduates the college has ever produced. We doubled our three-year graduation rate, putting us at the very top of New England community colleges. And we just continue to improve and to stay true to our mission. So I want to thank every single one of you and send you my very best wishes to you and to your family for a peaceful Thanksgiving. I look forward to taking some questions when we move to that part of the meeting, and I will turn it over now to Vice President Costigan so she can report on academic affairs. Thank you all.
Thank you, President Hughes. Good morning, everyone. I am very, very happy to be coming to you today to give you an update on academic affairs. My comments today will focus primarily on where we are in terms of our preparation for continuing to offer remote and online learning. As President Hughes stated, we made the decision earlier this fall to move the entire year to a remote learning platform. And as a result of that, I worked with Student Affairs, the deans and I, and with Institutional Effectiveness to launch two surveys. And my remarks today will really focus on the findings of the surveys. The surveys were directed towards our students and our faculty. And there were overlapping questions, but there were questions related to faculty exclusively. I'm really very, very happy to report that our response rate was very good. All students were surveyed, and there was a response rate of 25%, which is very good for a student survey. All faculty teaching this fall were surveyed, and we had an excellent response rate of 55%. And I think we got some very, very encouraging news. I know I say this often, but it cannot be said enough. I just want to personally thank the faculty for all that you have done to respond to this unprecedented and historic pandemic. As President Hughes stated, this is a once-in-a-lifetime. Hopefully, it's been 100 years. Not many people left that can tell us the roadmaps to success in academia with managing such a disease. Let me begin by saying that the news is good with the faculty, and I'm going to begin with them. One of the questions we asked was the overall experience for faculty teaching this fall semester. And they rated that as 81%, as good to excellent. We also asked a question on the confidence level being ready for Spring 2021 online and received a 92% confidence, either confident or very confident, in their readiness to teach online in the spring. These are remarkable positive signs and certainly reflect all the hard work that each and every one of you have done since March 13th, when we were acutely aware that we would be moving into a different direction, the unimaginable challenges that befell us. I will say that the four questions I can share with you that we were asking both faculty and students about were related to faculty-student engagement, course content, grading evaluation, and virtual tools. What we found is, as I said, that it was, I'm sorry, 56% response rate from our students in their overall satisfactory experience for the fall. So they're above 50%, but there certainly is room for improvement. In the four category questions, the one area that both faculty and students identified as needing more improvement was in the area of student engagement. So as a result of these findings, which came through the survey, we have launched a couple of campaigns through our Blackboard system. One that targeted students that provided some information and tools on how to better manage an asynchronous environment, improve engagement. And the other campaign was, and is just completed, targeting our faculty in terms of what is available for engagement tool usage. These survey findings are aligned with what the data metrics we get reported on weekly from Blackboard, discussion boards, blogs. Those are the types of tools of engagement that would be helpful to utilize more in order to improve this area. I would like to thank our instructional designer, Mitch McIntyre, and our CIT team. The CIT team launched the campaigns. They are running webinars currently, so if you have an opportunity to take part in those, I certainly would encourage you to do so. We have come a long way since last March, where we were really moving from a 40% usage of our learning management system into, so getting the basics of that down for many of us, moving into a more intermediate level. This included many of you enrolling in the EPTO course. It also included summer enrollment in the Blackboard Academy, where we had more than 300 faculty participate. As we're moving forward, I would just like to update you on some other opportunities for professional development that are coming forward. We have another AQ, and this is our third and final AQ cohort that will begin December 1st. To date, we have over 40 faculty who have completed this program, which really does focus on many of the essential elements that enhance engagement and utilizing an online space for instruction. We also will be sponsoring a three-day workshop during the winter break for faculty that would like to move into the intermediate level of Blackboard usage. So those are some of the immediate opportunities that will be available. We, of course, have an EPTO cohort underway. We will continue to run that in the spring. And another theme that emerged from this, in addition to the, I would say, the engagement issue, is that faculty felt that the students need more orientation into the virtual and/or online learning space. So this was one of the reasons that I charged interim dean Allison Hanley, assisted by interim dean Barbara Norman, to form a faculty and staff ad hoc assessment committee, which is underway. Very, very pleased with the number of people that are involved. We have over 45 to look at the impact of the COVID virus pandemic on our academic program. So they are meeting now to look at several subcategories, look at some of the actions that were necessary to be taken, evaluate outcomes. I am looking forward to an interim report in the next several weeks and possibly having some recommendations for spring with a final report due to me by the end of the academic year. So I am very, very pleased with all of the work that's being done by that committee. This has been a historic time, as we know, and I really am optimistic that we will get through this together. You have been wonderful the summer. The summer was a very successful launch. We had wonderful results with our laboratory sciences, the transitions that they were able to make, our health science division. I'm not playing favorites here. I'm just talking about the areas, performing arts and art, where really, really was challenging to come up with the transition to a remote learning environment and the work that went into it. So thank, a special thanks to all of you as well. This really concludes my update right now. I've been pleased to have three faculty meetings over the fall. Look forward to one more, and I thank you for allowing me this time. Wish you and your families a very safe and healthy Thanksgiving. And I am positive that happier and better days are ahead for all of us. At this time, I'd like to introduce Vice President Sarah Enright. Vice President Enright?
All right. Thank you, Rosemary. I appreciate that. And good morning, everyone. I think I continue to find it, I will admit, quite odd to be talking into my laptop, looking at myself, knowing that there are 300 or 400 of you out there listening. So I'll just start with thanks and hello. I think really I would start with, I hope you're all having a fantastic day, although it's such an interesting reset of expectations, just life in 2020. So I guess what I would say is I hope you are healthy and well and making the best of navigating what I know we're all navigating in different ways. So my hope today is to share a brief enrollment update that really does a few things. Recaps the fall, which I know we've talked about at several different points, but just kind of summarizes where we landed. Looks at what the spring data is telling us right now, and then points toward what are the actions we're taking and collectively, how do we go after this as an institution? So thank you, Amy, for graciously agreeing to share my slides. We can go to the first one. Thank you. So this first slide represents where we landed with fall enrollment. Our goal originally was to have 14,775 students, which was really a flat enrollment goal compared to the prior year. And pre-pandemic, that seemed very reasonable and achievable. But of course, everything was upended starting in March. So there's good news and bad in this, I think. The good news is that our team, and I'm picturing hundreds of faces across Student Affairs in particular, worked harder, better, faster, and more creatively every day from March through this entire fall enrollment push than probably any other community college team in New England. And having talked to colleagues across New England, I really mean that. And reflecting on our results, that's what you see here. So yes, we are down 7.4% relative to last fall and relative to our original budgeted goal. But when you compare that to the national statistics, which you see on the right-hand side of this slide, you'll see that 7% down on a relative landscape was actually a quite favorable outcome. And again, I think there's this reality in 2020 that we are resetting expectations. So I didn't imagine I'd ever be in a place where I'm talking to our college community with enormous pride, having achieved a negative 7% figure on anything, frankly. But I am incredibly proud, and I saw exactly what went into getting there. I saw people texting students at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday and 10:00 p.m. on Sunday and around the clock. You know, I saw students going to, I saw staff members going to meet students in person in random locations with masks on, six feet apart, to make things happen. So the amount of real sincere effort and creativity and switching everything online and dealing with all the challenges inherent in that, it worked. So I think that we came from a place where in May, when we started our fall enrollment push and we were only a couple of weeks into it, we were off by 45%. And early in the summer, we were off by 30%. So my primary message in this is simply thank you to everyone who was involved in getting to this place. I am really grateful for that. And I know that the students who receive kind of personalized, dogged, tailored outreach that we delivered over the span of months are grateful. I had a good conversation with a student a few days ago who's not having a perfect semester. I think so few students are right now, given the challenges. But we were just having a really good conversation about sort of pride of persistence. And I think for the students who we were able to pull back into our institution for this fall, it's just that, they are moving forward. And we all like to move forward in a straight upward, linear, right-on-plan pathway. But this year, more than ever, that's not what we're seeing. But I think the pride of persistence that we have embraced as an institution and that we are seeing individual students and all of our staff and all of our faculty really take on is what got us to where we are. So that is our final picture. And I think looking at that fall picture is kind of the context that underpins what we're looking at for the spring. So Amy, we can go to the next slide for spring. So spring, again, our original budgeted goal for the spring semester is to get to 13,070 students. I do not expect that we will get there, but it is our goal that we do what we did for the fall, which is work as aggressively as possible to really do three things in this case. One is to retain the students we have. We've got 13,684 students with us this fall. We've got to hang on to as many students as we can. The second is to recruit students who were here in the past, and in many cases here just last spring, and didn't make it back this fall for a variety of reasons. And then the third is to go after what we would characterize as the summer melt population, the many students who perhaps intended to enroll in college for the first time this fall, who applied because of the many complexities of the pandemic, didn't make it here. So it's really, those are the three populations that we will be targeting. I wish that I were coming to you all today to say that we learned so much through the summer and the fall, and we've perfected how you recruit and enroll and retain students in the middle of a pandemic that's peaking more and more each day. The reality is, we're still up against a very substantial challenge. When you look at what you're seeing here is the goal, and then you're seeing where we are right now today. At this same point, I'm sorry, this actually isn't right now, today. It's two-day-old data, but 32% is still where we are today. The absolute numbers would be slightly different. But what you say is, see, is that this time for last spring last year, we had more than 5,600 students already enrolled for the spring term. Now we have just over 3,800 students. So that's a big delta and a big hill to climb. And for those of you in Student Affairs who are acutely aware of this, but the spring enrollment push is a much shorter one. So our spring semester is right around the corner. So we will be working day over day to start to close this gap and to narrow it as much as we possibly can. And Amy, you can flip to the next slide, because what I really want to talk about is, how are we going to do that? So the next steps, you'll see on the left, those are really the three sort of populations and target push areas that I discussed with keeping the students we have, working on the students who were here previously, and going after those students who didn't enroll. The things that we already have underway, you'll see on the right. So caseload advising, first off, just thank you to the advising and counseling team. I know, you know, I sort of feel the way Rosemary was just talking at the end of her remarks. I wish I could thank each person at our college and our division individually because I know that would be merited and warranted. So I will thank as many people as I can. But what I would say sincerely is just, I fully recognize how hard people are working, how much people are flexing, and how challenging that is for each and every one of you during this time. So just thank you. I think advising in particular has had an enormous amount of change during this time period. And all advisors have taken on a caseload of 200-plus new students who they are working with directly and individually, because we know those relationships matter. So that is a big support in our, number one, on the left, the fall-to-spring persistence category. Online advising and registration labs, those are open and live and a way to try to Online advising and registration labs, those are open and live and a way to try to serve students and mirror what we typically do in person, which is get students through the whole choose your courses and get you registered for them all in one fell swoop. Virtual open houses, special shout out to the admissions team who had more than 100 students on an open house last night, the first one of the year, and it was just really positive and good energy. And I know that that put, that team put an enormous amount of work into pulling that off. So thank you. We are fortunate to have a two-way text messaging system that we have fortunately not broken, but we have used it to its maximum limits and we will continue to do so. And thank you also to the person who have been delivering in-person services. We've continued to run into a small number of students who are struggling to figure out how to get everything done that they need to get done to enroll or continue through our online and remote services. So we have had some folks who are delivering in-person services and really appreciate that as well. In terms of what I would hope that we can all contribute to, I think it's the very simple asking every student you encounter in every way and every moment that you can, have you registered for spring yet? Because out of that often shake, when we ask that question, you often hear and find, what are the obstacles? What are the questions? How might I get this student to the supports that they need to get registered for spring? So first, to every faculty and staff member listening, please ask that question as often as you can and send students to us in Student Affairs for any follow-up that's necessary. And second, and this is really great input from Popsipola, who's been at the front lines with his team of serving students, it's emphasize to students that concept of persisting really matters. So there's nothing perfect about what students experiencing right now. And the vast majority of them would like to be able to come onto campus, take some classes on campus, and not be confronting a pandemic. But what we want to try to stop students from doing is saying, I'm just going to take the semester off. I think as we have seen in our data time and time again, the semester off turns into the year off or years off and, and leads too many of those students to never earn a college degree. So as much as you can, when you hear anything along those lines, it's having real engagement and conversations with students about how much it matters to just stick with it, even in these imperfect times. So that's where we are in enrollment. I think I have a very, very real concern that we could be in a worse position for spring than we were for fall because the pandemic is just so significant in our community right now. And I think retaining students is going to be more challenged than, than ever, just given the challenges of online learning combined with the challenges of life in COVID-19, whether that's the rapidly increasing infection rates or the continued economic impacts that students and their families are facing. So I think all those things combined have me concerned about the spring and really wanting to emphasize that every little bit that each of us can do every day will matter. We know that relationships matter with faculty, with a staff advisor, with anyone. So as much as you can be out in front of students and be encouraging them at this time, it's going to support those students as individuals and certainly going to support the strength of the institution overall. So with that, thank you, and I will turn it back to Amy Kemp, our host.
Sorry. Thank you, Sarah. Now, please welcome Vice President of Finance and Strategy, Kristin Albright.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Amy and Sarah. I want to thank everyone for being here. This is incredible. We saw the, the list of all the folks who had registered. And again, I so wish that we could be there together in the Great Hall, but since that's not possible, I'm, I'm so grateful that you've all come and, and joined us, joined us virtually here this morning. And so there you go. Thanks, Amy. So what I'd like to do today is talk to you a little bit about our FY21 budget and where we are. And then we'll talk about our FY22 submission and what those pieces look like. There's several different steps to that. And then we'll take a look at how I would like us and what I'm recommending and how we move forward from here as a college in terms of our finances. So let's go back to our FY20 enacted budget. So as you can see, what was enacted for FY20, so when I say enacted, again, that is the, the budget that is voted on by the legislature and that is brought into, into law. Sorry, the dog reality over here. So that budget on the state appropriations side was right at 52 million, and you can see that there. So if you remember, at the end of FY20, we had an adjusted budget, and that budget was adjusted 5.4 million. And so if we look at the next column, which is our FY21 CSL, that is the budget that we presented to the, the legislature after the governor's budget, her recommended budget came out. So this figure represents the governor's recommendation and what we presented to the legislature. Next slide. So as Vice President Enright talked to you about enrollment for the fall, she talked to you about us being down 7.4% in headcount. So that represents in terms of our projection, a reduction of $2.5 million from where we thought we would be from, from our FY20 numbers. So the thing that I want us to remember here, as you can see, we, we did significantly better than our worst-case scenario. But it is important to remember that this is an improvement that's on a fourth of our total revenue. So if you think about our, the big pieces of our budget being enrollment and state appropriations, half of our enrollment number is reflected in these figures. So it's roughly a fourth of our budget. So while I'm encouraged, and I do think these are good signs, I think we still have a significant budget concern that we're going to have to work through. Next slide. And so in a normal year, the legislature would have enacted the FY21 budget in the summer, and we would have spent the fall presenting our, our 22 budget to the OPC and working through those meetings with them, and then submitting our budget to the legislature for the budget, I'm sorry, to the, the state budget office for the governor to review. And then she makes a recommendation in January. So what happens over the summer is that the state budget office gives us a target amount for the, for the next year's budget. So what they have done during the, during the COVID era is for FY22, our target for state appropriations from the state budget office is a 15% reduction to FY20 enacted. So if you remember, we talked about FY20 enacted being $52 million. So you can see that 15% reduction to that $52 million is nearly an $8 million reduction for us on the state appropriations side. Now, it is good news that they included the $5.4 million back into our base that we reduced for the adjusted budget at the end of FY20, which was a reflection of what we received in CARES money. So it was meant to offset that. So it's a good sign that that came back into our base. Having said that, this is the only indication that we have gotten about what our state appropriations budget looks like. And so as we said, state appropriations is half of our budget. So at this point financially, if I look big picture, I, I know for sure what the first half of enrollment looks like for the year. And you just heard Vice President Enright say it's still very uncertain what that's going to look like. We don't have an FY21 budget from the state yet. On the state appropriations side, we don't have, and we have direction on FY22, that's a 15% reduction. Having said that, without knowing 21, we still don't know a lot about what 22 is going to look like. All we know is what we've been asked to do. Next slide. So I just wanted to briefly show you our capital plan. So this covers the next five years for our capital plan. I think most of you have seen this before, and most of you probably have either worked on these projects to some level or been, benefit from them. So we asked for $138 million based on what was recommended by the, the governor and the state capital budget office. Next slide. So we talked about the different sort of stages of how we asked for a budget. We would get guidance from the state budget office on what those, those set numbers are. And the set numbers I'm talking about are like, what are the, what are the insurance rates going to be as they increase for the state? Those things that are sort of out of our control, but that we know are going to happen. So we still have to budget for them. So after we get through that step, Emery and, and I and build a budget at a base level with all of you, and it moves up and we, we make that presentation, the president presents that budget to the OPC. So once the OPC approves that, it moves on. So what the OPC has asked us to do for this year for FY22, you'll see here. They've asked us to present two different budgets. They've asked for, what does it really cost? So if I look at the, the first bit of the recommendation, it's saying if there were no COVID and, and everything had stabilized, and you know what you know now even still, what would it cost to run your college? So we've done that. We have, we have a, our budget will reflect what our true cost to operate is. And then we will present a constrained budget for the 15% that we've been asked for by the state, the state budget office. Next slide. So what, what's next? We're going to continue to prepare for our students and what's going to happen over the next few months, which in some areas, we have, we know that we will have to prioritize making some investments to be able to provide quality instruction to our students and, and service. And my, my group and I will continue to plan for multiple scenarios to increase our ability to respond to the pandemic. Like I said, there's so many variables that are, one of the things about making financial projections is you have a certain set of assumptions. And then as, as things become known, you bring some, you take the assumptions away and put the actuals in. We still got way more assumptions than we do actuals. I hope that, that helps. So what we're trying to do as we are making these plans is to make sure that we are supporting our students and making sure that we're disrupting you all as little as we possibly can and making sure that we're protecting the health and safety of our community. So I'm going to continue to ask you to operate under a constrained budget. I know that many of you on this call, and will, this will be much like what, what Sarah said about her folks earlier and everyone, many of folks on this call have been a part of one of the projects that we've worked on to make us more efficient, make it cost less to run our college. You've either been on it or you're currently working on it and you have, you've done the work to move mountains. So I just want you all to know that, that we're certainly starting to see the benefits of that. And so we're going to keep moving in that direction. So the other two things I want you to know about, we'll continue to wait for a federal stimulus and wait to hear more from the state. And when we do, we'll make sure and let you know, keep you informed for that information. And then once we receive our FY21 budget allocation and we know more, we will start rolling those out and decentralizing that money. It is very centralized right now. We have a plan once we have that number to, to decentralize and move those dollars back out to you all. Of course, it will be less, and we probably will be much more structured than what we've done before. But again, we definitely want your, your input on what your needs are. And so that's what I have today. Again, I want to thank you all for being here. I hope you guys, you and yours have a wonderful Thanksgiving and that you all stay safe, happy and healthy. Thank you. So now I want to turn it over to Bobby Gondola, our AVP of Institutional Advancement.
Thank you so much, Kristin, and good morning, everyone. I will just take a few minutes because I have to beat the sun that's casting. It's just about to come over my face. So hello from our Lincoln campus. Over the next few minutes, I will provide a quick update on our foundation and alumni work. And so the first slide that I'll begin with is a trustee update. Thanks for pulling that up, Amy. So this, this first quarter, we elected three new CCRI Foundation trustees. And a board objective of ours is to ensure the diversity of background and experience of our trustees. So we're thrilled to have the experience and perspectives of Angie and Koma, Vice President from the Rhode Island Foundation, Brioni Boyer, Senior Vice President from Hasbro, and Tom Gilbane, CEO of Gilbane, as they help us advance the foundation's fundraising and equity agenda. The next slide is an alumni programs update. So in response to us primarily working remotely, we launched Alumni After Hours. These are focused special topic sessions for alumni and the broader CCRI community. This summer, we hosted our first Alumni After Hour, which was perspectives from the front lines. And we had three alums sharing their experience working during the ongoing pandemic. So Marielle, just pictured here, Marielle Lucca, Diversity Council Chair and Trustee, Tony McGuire, our President of our Alumni Association, and David Mata, one of our recent alums, spoke about their experience. And it was great to hear from them and have so many of our alums join us in this inaugural program. And it was also amazing to have so many of our health and dental faculty join us as members of our community. So I will go to our next slide and highlight two upcoming Alumni After Hours, which you're certainly all invited to join us. Growing your personal wealth and community service and leadership. These, the latter is education-focused, the first business and personal finance-focused. And these are opportunities for our alums to build the power of our CCRI network. I just want to quickly shout out Millie De La Cruz, one of our alums who's on my team for building out these programs and building our alumni network. So our next slide, I will turn to the foundation's response to the pandemic this fall. And we raised half a million dollars for our student emergency relief fund. And with that, we were able to provide through this fall, $330,000 plus dollars in awards to 407 students, to be exact. These student emergency relief fund programs are threefold. The first is emergency grants, so helping students meet their basic human needs related to food, housing and healthcare. Second is the new program that Sarah mentioned earlier in our call, and that's our Comeback Scholarships. It's been incredible to partner with Kelly Morrisey as a, a close ally in accomplishing this student impact work. And it's, it's an honor for us to be able to provide that support to our Comeback Scholars. I have the privilege of getting so many emails and communications from our students, especially those students that are reacting to finding out that they received a scholarship or an award. And so a recent email from Georgie comes to mind for me where she said, and I'm just going to read it here, the Comeback Scholarship provided the piece of the puzzle that I needed most. And thank you, CCRI, for all the support that you've provided. So that thank you is really to all of you and helping to build that runway to support our students. Last, last slide is simply a thank you to all of you. So many of our colleagues, many of you, I saw the list on this call, actually made gifts this summer and this fall to our student emergency relief fund to help keep our students in classes with us. So to all of you, thank you. And everyone here, if you have any feedback or questions for me, please feel free to reach out directly to me. And you're also welcome to visit our website and get more information about the programs that we're running. So at this point, I'll simply say thank you again and pass it back over to Amy Kemp, who I appreciate brought us all together today. And I know, Amy, you'll facilitate our Q and A session now.
Great. Thank you so much, Bobby. So yes, we are going to turn to our facilitated Q and A session. As a reminder, we, if the questions that you submitted were not answered during the presentation or during this section, we will make sure that we get an answer for you. So why don't we get started right away? Megan, our President Hughes, this is a question for you. What can you show? Um, what can you share about the status of and the future of the Promise Program?
Got it. Thank you, Amy. Um, I think about what Sarah Enright said a few minutes ago about last night's open house. So thank you to everybody uh, on the team that pulled that off. Uh, the report that Sarah, Sarah shared with me this morning was that uh, the number one question asked by potential students and their families was around Promise. Is there going to be a Promise Program next September? So let's review what we know about the program and then talk about what we all can do. Uh, when the legislation was written for the pilot program, uh, the legislation uh, indicates that it will measure the program's success uh, based on two criteria, uh, access and outcomes. So enrollment and graduation. And what we know that the Promise Program has done is more than doubled our enrollment. Uh, and that in particular, we have seen our enrollment increase for our low-income students and our students of color. Uh, so the data clearly reflects that we have accomplished uh, the goal set in the first part of the, of the pilot legislation. The second is, of course, outcomes, which means graduation rates and uh, what the Rhode Island Promise Program has produced is a more than quadrupling of our historic uh, two-year graduation rate. So on both scores, uh, certainly uh, the students have accomplished what the legislation intended. And the lengthy report that we delivered uh, to the legislature last spring uh, communicated that very specifically. Now to the status, let's start with those students who joined our open house last night. Um, those are families all over Rhode Island, hundreds and hundreds of them who are sitting at their dining table, trying to figure out whether their high school senior can go to the Community College of Rhode Island as a Rhode Island Promise Scholar. Um, that is, I think, the most important sharing I will give, which is timing really matters. Um, without the pandemic, there's no question that the legislature would have made a decision last spring about whether or not to remove the sunset clause in the language. So the governor, when she rolled out her budget in what now feels like a lifetime ago, at the beginning of January of this calendar year, uh, put this, removing the sunset clause of the Promise Program as one of her central priorities. She continues to message that it remains central to her budgetary priorities. Uh, and so we, we feel hopeful. What else do we know? Um, just as Kristin Albritton shared with you and Sarah Enright, uh, you know, there is a fiscal challenge uh, facing the state. If we simply look at the projected budget deficit, it remains statewide uh, in the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars. So that is the context that certainly our legislature, uh, when it comes back after Thanksgiving, is going to be perceiving the request to remove the sunset clause. The request, what it would mean, on average, uh, it is roughly seven million dollars in new state money that comes in to fund that program. What does it mean for the college? Uh, I think what it means in terms of the mission is self-evident. It's why we do what we do, to create a college degree as a possibility for thousands of Rhode Islanders. So the Promise Program matters to us for that reason, and it's at the core of our mission. What does it actually mean for our fiscal health? It means roughly seven million dollars in state money that would go away should the sunset clause disappear. It also certainly means that the many millions of dollars in new Pell money that came in as a consequence of this program would also be negatively impacted. So a succinct way of saying that is, the financial health of this college certainly depends on the sunset clause being removed. So where are we today? Um, we are working very, very closely with our uh, legislators in order to communicate uh, really two things. Um, the success of the program that we did with the legislation asked us to do and the importance of the program for Rhode Island. In the uh, three years of data that we have since the launch, uh, the program has led to a statewide increase of fifteen percent in the college-going population. There is simply no other policy in the state of Rhode Island that is improve, that has presented that kind of growth. So it leads me finally to, so what can you do? What we can all do is contact our legislator and tell that legislator why you believe the Promise Program matters, why it matters to our students, why it matters to our college, and why it matters to the state of Rhode Island. So um, I hope that gets to, to the question. We will be watching it very closely uh, between now and the end of the year, and certainly will be sharing whatever we're learning uh, with the college community. So thank, thanks for the question, Amy.
Great. Thank you, Megan. Um, next question, uh, Sarah, if you can answer this. So we have a question with the college staying virtual for the spring, has a decision um, on commencement been made yet? And if not, when can we expect that?
Uh, good question. No, a decision has not been made. And that we're going to have to make a decision in the first quarter of 2021. I think that we all, I think everyone on this call loves commencement. It is, it is the celebration of what we all come to work to do every day, which is help students achieve their college goals and dreams. So uh, I would love it if we could have some form of an in-person commencement. And it's entirely dependent on the progression of this virus and the path toward uh, vaccine and, and other mitigation strategies. So we don't know, but we will be making a decision in Q1 of next year.
Thank you. Um, Alix, uh, this question I think is good for you. Um, and if anybody else um, wants to weigh on a question, please feel free to do so. Um, with the news of COVID vaccines becoming available in the near future, will the college require that everyone get a vaccine? Or attend classes?
Great. Um, hi, everyone. Um, well, I think, you know, it is so encouraging that we've had two companies come forward with such successful testing of um, of their respective vaccines. And I know how I know how much um, it would mean just kind of to the whole world to know that there was an end in sight on this. And I um, it, it, when a vaccine became widely available, I think we would be working with the Department of Health on the, whatever their distribution plan was and um, how to connect them with members of our community. But we'd also kind of look to them in terms of any kind of regulations uh, around um, the need for the vaccine. And um, and then we would be communicating that to our community as well. So I really, we would look to the experts on this and um, follow their lead.
Thank you. And as a follow-up to that, um, VP Costigan and Enright, I think uh, you two might be able to best answer this. Um, with a vaccine available and hopefully a reduction in the community spread of the virus, do you think we will be able to increase the number of in-person classes for spring? And what do you anticipate uh, for summer and fall 2021 in terms of in-person versus remote teaching?
Uh, I'm happy to go first. Um, I echo um, Alix's comments. This is very encouraging news on the vaccine. And it will be uh, dependent on exactly what she outlined. Um, the, uh, the distribution of the vaccine, um, what the virus does, does it stop to dissipate? Uh, so there are many, many factors, but I think um, what we are hearing nationally is that this is going to take a bit of time to roll out, but the news is very, very promising. And I uh, will go back to President Hughes's initial comment where, you know, next year at this time, I would hope and expect that we would be in a more normalized environment. Sarah, I don't know if you have any?
Yeah, I think that's spot on. The only thing I would add in terms of the sort of specific semester-by-semester outlook would be to, to say we do not expect additional in-person classes this spring. I think we're optimistic about more in-person activity, whether that's office hours, the library, uh, you name it. But I think our spring schedule is set, and so students have their expectations, their schedules, et cetera, set around um, what we have put forth for the spring. So summer and fall, uh, I feel similar to what I just shared with respect to commencement. But just to clarify, in terms of spring, we wouldn't expect that we'll be switching midsemester to in-person.
Great. Thank you. And um, before we move on to the next question, I do want to say I realize it is just twelve noon and we had promised and hoped that we would wrap this up in an hour. Uh, we are going to stay on for as long as it takes to finish up the questions that we have here. I do hope that um, everybody can stay, but we certainly understand if you cannot. Again, we will be posting a full recording of this, so if you have to go off to another meeting, uh, we will make sure that everybody has a, a full recording of this. And with that, why don't I turn it over to a question for VP Albritton? Um, if, if, can you explain a little bit more about the impact of the CARES funding on the college? Did it give the college more money or less, or were there certain restrictions, or how did that, you can just explain a little bit more about that?
Sure. Um, so the college received just over ten million dollars in CARES funding, CARES funding. So it's a big, it's a big uh, grant, a big um, piece of legislation. Um, so um, half of that was meant to go directly to our students, and it went in the form of emergency aid. So um, right off the bat, that five million dollars went directly to our students, as it should have. And uh, one of the reasons that I think the, the feds did that is because we do have the mechanism to be able to get those kinds of funds out to our students. Uh, so Kelly and Dave and, and their offices worked really hard to get that out. So half the money went directly to our students. The other half of the money was directed to go to um, institutional costs as a result of the pandemic. They had to be, they have to be directly um, related to the pandemic. They can't be anything that we're, that we can't supplant. And what that means, um, for those of you um, who aren't knee-deep in federal grants, it just means that um, we can't take something we were already planning for um, and add that CARES money on to it. We, we can't cover something that, that was already in our budget with CARES money. It has to be something new that came about because of the pandemic. Um, and the other piece, that is, that is the part of the grant. Um, on the state side, what it did, um, because we received those funds, um, that's the direct amount that our, our state budget was reduced. So the state's trying to save uh, money for a large deficit. Um, I'm sure that, that they assumed, yeah, we got five million dollars in CARES money, that we could cover some of those expenses with that money. Um, now, uh, in many cases, that's just, that's just not the case. Um, so when I, when I said earlier that the um, the five point four was put back into our base, we didn't receive more money. Um, they put them, they put, they calculated our fifteen percent reduction based off the inactive number. Um, and I'll, I meant by they um, added that money from the adjusted back into the inactive for the calculation. In terms of funding, it actually has put a lot of um, hindrances on us and our ability to spend because we have real expenses from the pandemic. And there were many, many rules surrounding the CARES money, not only at the federal level, but also at the state level. Uh, so we have just been cleared in the last month or so to actually start to draw down some of those funds. Um, at, one last thing I'll say is, you know, federal grants, they don't just give you a ten million dollar check. You have to spend it first on the correct things, and then they'll reimburse you.
Thank you. Uh, I think that's much clearer. Okay, um, AVP Ogden, I think we have a couple of questions related to you specifically about COVID and the college. Um, I think I will put these together and one, maybe you can answer them both. Is there a threshold of COVID cases in the state, statewide cases in which the college would revert back almost entirely to remote teaching and learning and working? And if so, what is that? And then second, um, with the increase in cases that the state is experiencing of late, has there been any talk of using our campuses for testing like they did here at the night parking lot in the, in the summer?
Okay, great. Um, in terms of a threshold, um, there isn't kind of a college threshold for when we'd go all remote. It's, um, I think of it more as kind of looking at what is happening in the state. Um, right now, we're still in phase three, which is defined as if you can successfully work from home, you should. Um, and a lot of us are doing that. Um, and I know that it's, it's hard not to be together. I've, I have been to campus several times this fall and um, you know, it's, it's strange seeing in Warwick, the, the large buildings so empty. But I know, um, you know, the, our, we've had, um, you know, Vice President Costigan outlined the classes that we have been having on campus. And I think that if, if we move back to what a phase two, here's what my suspicion is. I think um, it's very likely we might move back into a phase two. I think it's going to be a different phase two than the kind that we had in the spring because I think that we've learned more, we have more um, systems and processes in place. But I think that we would really have to take a really good, hard look, um, should the state be at a, a phase two about our own practices within the college. Um, in terms of testing, many of you may know that there has been what they call um, surveillance testing um, at our colleges across the state. CCRI to date has not participated in it largely because we are so remote. Um, there are not a lot of people on campus. We have been approached by the State Department of Health and uh, about having yeah, doing a pilot program. And basically what's going to happen is at the beginning of next week um, until Saturday, there's going to be kind of an, an open appointment, not open appointment, a process by which you can sign up for an appointment to get um, a test that's specifically for the CCRI community at our Providence campus, the Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday after Thanksgiving. And so you'll see, you'll see quite a bit from us really encouraging people to take advantage of that resource. And if it goes well and we have uh, the participation that would sustain it, uh, we would be, we would work with the Department of Health about how we'd put in something that was more routine surveillance testing.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank, that's perfect. Uh, thank you. Um, this next question, I would say, is for you and also Vice President Albritton. Um, with the improvements in enrollment from what was originally projected, has the college's financial picture improved? And if so, will the college bring back the employees who were laid off?
So, I mean, I can certainly um, start, um, start that, Amy. Um, so as I, I talked about earlier, um, our, our file did come in better than we had hoped. But again, it, it is a, in the large scope of things, it is a fourth of our total budget. And you heard Vice President Enright say, we still have very much that's unknown about enrollment for the spring. Um, so in terms of our financial position, um, overall, we are still facing uh, the worst financial crisis I've ever experienced in higher ed. So having said that, I think that's our, our frame. Yes. Um, it, it's not catastrophic um, in the way that we thought it might be so far, but there is still very much that's unknown. And we are, we're just not, um, we don't know what's going to happen yet.
And I guess the only thing that I would add is that um, for uh, those employees that were laid off that are in a bargaining unit, um, there is a provision to have a recall process. And that would be the process that we would follow. Um, should we uh, you know, if, should we find ourselves in a position that we are doing, um, that we could hire more employees?
Great. Thank you. And um, stay there, AVP Ogden. This next question is for you. It's actually a two-part question. Um, so I'll try to go slow here. If you need me to read a part of it again, please let me know. So how were the positions targeted for layoffs identified? And what role did seniority play in that decision-making process? That's part one. And part two is while we understand that layoffs may have been based on seniority playing certainly a part, that left some departments more impacted than others. And what is the college doing to ensure that those departments impacted by the layoffs uh, receive the support staff and resources they need to run effectively? And what is the timeframe for doing so? Then maybe it was a four-part question. Sorry.
It's okay. I took notes. Um, so the way that we went about this process is that we looked in the areas of the college where we felt we could either, that we could meet the college's need with a shared services model or by a change in our business practice. And then according to the collective bargaining agreements, that uh, the that the unions in which those classifications sat, excuse me, we did use a seniority process as laid out in the CBAs, the collective bargaining agreements, in order to determine who was going to be laid off. It's really important to note, we did not look at different departments. We didn't look at individual people. It was by seniority, by looking at the classification. You know, I think that we know that there, there were departments that were impacted and we expected and are in the process of working through a reorganization. So I would say the timeframe for that, there, there are some short-term things that we will do, which is like a reorganization of certain positions to respond to certain departments' needs. I'm hoping that we're looking at a two, like a two-week horizon for that. Longer term, the reorganization and a building of a shared services model and change in business practice, that's going to take a little bit longer. So I, when I think about that, I think about kind of the next six months. And that will give us the opportunity to really be thoughtful and build it well. So I think I answered all four parts.
I believe you did. Thank you. Next question. So again, Vice President Costigan and Enright, I think this could be for you guys. What has CCRI done or planned to do for the coming semester to ensure that incoming students are prepared for online classes?
Okay. Rosarina, do you want to start or I'm happy to start?
As I said in my presentation, that was one of the, one of the themes that came through from faculty. And we are, and I have the ad hoc assessment committee working on several of these topics. It is a multidisciplinary approach. There are several resources currently available. But we will be coming together with student affairs, student success, academic affairs, and, and, and looking at how we can improve and better support our students as they enter into virtual classrooms. Sarah, do you have any additional?
Yeah, no, I would just say that spot on. My, I was just going to say that it's a how, not an if, in terms of developing some form of better online orientation for students. And I know that there's been a very active conversation about that between Michael Cunningham, the Dean of Students, and Joanne Galliano and the folks in the Student Success Center. And I think our goal over the next month or so will be to connect the dots and kind of all of the different folks talking about this need so that we really come up with the best solution for students.
Great, thank you. I will say a little plug for Joanne and the Student Success Center. I know they do a tremendous job with students inside the classroom and without doubt, I'm sure they will come up with a great solution. Vice President Costigan, here's a question I believe you'd be perfect for. Does the college anticipate a reduction of availability of course offerings for adjunct faculty?
Well, thank you for that question. As we are planning for the spring, we'll be monitoring the enrollment daily. We'll be working together with the enrollment services. I appreciate all the work that's been done in, in those partnerships between the departments and the enrollment management team. I would ask faculty who are joining us today to encourage registration of students who are currently here. Retention is one of our biggest drivers. It is certainly my hope and my desire that we are offering a, a, a good number of, of classes that will be able to certainly have our valued and much-needed adjunct faculty. So it's a difficult question to answer today, but we are going to work really hard. And, and I just would like to say thank you to all of our adjuncts play a valuable, invaluable role to the college. So I hope it's not an exact answer, but given the science we have, that's, that's the best I can do.
It's perfect. Thank you. And we have one final question, and this one is for Vice President Albritton. The bookstore experienced significant backlogs this past fall just due to the volume of students who were picking up books and ordering books. Have you looked at what to do differently in the spring to address that?
Sure, thanks, Amy. I want to note that, that part of the mission of our bookstore is to make sure that we have an ongoing commitment to giving our students great service. So the bookstore has partnered with a vendor that we've used for 20 years. And they've expanded our, our relationship with MBS Direct. So the great part about that is students will be able to have their books delivered directly to them. So our bookstore staff are currently working with them to make sure that that is successful for our students. Lots of great things coming and the staff, thank you bookstore staff, they're working really hard to make sure that, that, that goes well.
Great, thank you. And that concludes our facilitated Q and A for the town hall. And I would like to turn it back over to President Megan Hughes for any closing remarks.
Thanks, Amy, and thanks, everyone. I know that we went a few minutes over. I appreciate all of you who were able to stay, staying. A week from today, those of us who celebrate Thanksgiving will be gathering at our tables for that. This will be my smallest Thanksgiving in any of my 54 years. It's my husband and my children. I will be thankful for all that every single one of you has done for the college. I very much look forward to seeing you all again in person just as soon as we're able. And just thank you very, very much for all you're doing for the college. Have a good afternoon.